All right, 7:00 PM. It is Monday, September 12th, 2022. This is the Town and Brookfield Planning Board. A roll call. I am Tim Straz. John Mayer here.
Drew Ward here.
Carrie McManamy here.
Chris Stratton here.
Ed Ingles here.
Rich Zachary here.
An appointment of alternates, Ed? Would you like to be an appointee?
Sure.
All right, number one. Public comments. Seeing none, we move on. Announcements, correspondence, mail. We received an email from the New Hampshire Municipal Association about their 2022 Land Use Law Virtual Conference. It is Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It is going to be completely online. I have an agenda here. It's a $70 registration fee, which we can certainly accommodate in our budget if people are interested in participating. I can pass this around and I certainly can forward it to you all. And you can let me know if people want to participate and we can sign folks up. Review of and possible approval of minutes from August 8th, 2022. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
I'll make a motion, second minute presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 8th, 2022?
Say aye.
Aye.
Who's?
I'm going to have to stand.
So new business. New business, we have planning and zoning law changes for 2022. This was a document that I sent with the invite, the agenda, the House Bill 1021 and 1661, which involve some changes to how we operate as well as some of our zoning. Everybody had an opportunity to take a peek at that one?
Yeah, I attempted to.
Yes.
I've got a little long in the tooth.
Yes. So we can go through, there's a whole bunch of them. And there are going to be action items that result from some of these. So we might as well go through. We'll start with HB 1661, which involves many different sections. So we'll start with section 70, which is training. So there is details that there is a test and training offered for members of planning boards and CBAs. And also, there is a, I don't know if it's in this section, where you can test to have a certificate showing that you understand the rules. You've been, it's like a 65% pass to get the certificate, which declares that you've been knowledgeable.
So is this, we're looking to decide if we want that?
I believe it's, I don't think it's mandatory for the test.
It's a may.
A may, yes.
The word's a may.
Yes.
Targeted by that?
Yes. So there is, I can also forward to the group there. I don't know if it was attached to this one. There was a link to where the tests are located and you can take like a trial test. I'll forward that along to everybody.
Like a practice test?
Practice test, yeah.
I think it'd be good to take that test because if we ever get in trouble, I suspect some lawyer is going to say, "What training have you guys had?" And if we come out with none, we might look a little foolish. So let's take the test and see if we have to take the real training.
But what, is this training online?
It is, there's some of that. If you take the, I took the practice test and it's pretty much, it's a Google sheet where you just go through, Google form, you go through and take all the, I don't know if, I like to do it once. I don't know if the questions change.
Yeah.
But they, you can take it and score. You don't give your name or anything. And then, yeah. Some of it, you can, it kind of gives you the feel of the kind of the questions that are being asked. Some of them, I certainly needed to do some research to understand compared with most of them. So I'll send information on that to everyone. Section 71, which would be good, that Selectman Zachary is here, is the publication of fees. So we have to have a central location where all the document is for all of our fees scheduled for the planning board. I think it applies to the CBA also, all of them.
In, well, in one place that's acceptable is the website, right? That says in there.
Yes. But it has to be a separate document labeled of notice, has notice of land use board fees.
I'm on that site right now, looking to see if it's there today because I know we have a fee page.
But it's buried in our rules of procedure.
So we've got to pull it out. All right, so I'll take care of that.
Oh, thank you.
Because we'll make, I guess we'll have a page called "Planning Fees, CBA, Planning Board, Selectment, da-da-da."
Yeah.
And I think that would be sufficient.
Yeah, you're going to have to have your building inspector.
Yep.
All of that. Thank you. Section 72 is incentives. Gives municipalities that offer increased density to reduce lot size, expected approval or other dimensional or procedural incentives in housing for older persons for a one-year period to make adjustments to those incentives before they automatically apply to developments of workforce housing. I don't think this one. We don't, none of our zoning has this information on it. Next one, section 73 is written findings. This expands language requiring local land use boards to provide specific written findings of fact that support an approval or disapproval. The degree in which a local land use board should make detailed findings of fact in support and approval may vary based on the level of controversy associated with the application. So I read through this and I didn't. We, in our zoning, we already require that the planning board give a document, a findings document for disapproval, not necessarily for approval, but.
You give the document disapproval?
Yes, yes, we do. But I don't see why, you know, reading through this, you know, they, it says that things that should be, things should be anchored in the standards of the regulations, describe how the application does not meet the standards of the regulations, but may also include the exercise of independent judgment, experience, knowledge of the area by the board. Findings of fact should be complete so that, one, a reviewing court knows all your reasons and, two, the applicant has instructions if they want to try a second time. So I don't think this one applies to us for, because we already have our zoning listed. We have to give a reason for denial on judgment. Section 74 doesn't apply to us. Section 75, planning board timeline. So this actually is an interesting one because this will require us to amend our zoning. And I don't know, procedurally, what we're doing is we now have to have time for acting on completed applications, 65 days. And it goes on about failure of government approved application allows applicant to appeal to Superior Court, but which must act within 30 days and may order the municipality to pay the applicant's reasonable fees. So this change goes into effect January 1st, 2023. So in summary, the planning board has a total of 95 days in the case of developments of regional impact act upon an application, this one.
So three months would be a safe bet?
So if the planning board determines that it lacks sufficient information to make a final decision on an application and the applicant does not consent to extension, the board may deny the application without prejudice, allowing the applicant to reapply. If the planning board does not act on the application within 65-day period, the governing body is required to approve the application. So I guess the question, I don't know the answer to this, though I'm asking is if the House puts into effect a new zoning requirement, do we have to go through our, we must have to go through the whole process of putting it in front of the voter? Or can we amend, can the zoning be amended outside of the election cycle? Yeah, that's a, this is one I, the question I have that I don't know.
It doesn't hurt to put it in front of the voters. There's only one right answer. The state requires it. They say no, I don't know what they're arguing.
Right, that's, right, exactly. It's kind of, yeah.
Any situation where we can act on it within 95 days? Because it gets approved on that, like we don't have to.
Well, we did just go through one where we went three meetings.
Yeah.
We were pretty close. I think it's 85 days right now, fireball. We were, we were five days over.
Well, that was partly because we were waiting for responses from the state on the right-of-way. And we're also.
Yeah, but that doesn't matter for approval of the subdivision. They can certify land without requesting a driveway permit from the state, so.
It sounds like if there's insufficient information, we can ask for extension. If they don't agree to the extension, we can reject it and then they can reapply.
Correct.
With that information.
Correct. So I'll look into how do we implement this in our zoning. So, which goes into section 76, which is limits the ability of the planning board to request an extension from the governing body to file action on an application. So this one, it's just insane. Fee shifting and bond. Section 77 allows the Superior Court to require a bond from the appealing party, whatever appeal is filed. Allows court to award attorney's fees and cost to the appealing party. I don't recall this in our zoning. Acquiring property for workforce housing, section 78. We don't have a TIF tax incremental finance statute in our zoning. Same with 79, so I think these are not applicable. Unless we want to add a TIF district zoning to our zoning. But that kind of goes counter to our rural nature. Thoughts?
One just, just say reviolization districts as well. I guess that's still one, you know, district per se.
So there are a couple of items in here. I think, like, I'll sort out how we get the planning board timeline into our zoning. Rich is going to handle the publication of fees. Somebody want to take on looking into section 77, 78, 79? Let's see whether or not they are applicable to our zoning? And report back at the next meeting? Thank you. All right, HP 1021. This is about the religious use of a home in a residential neighborhood. I've read this one very briefly. I don't know if anybody else read through it, but it sounds like a certain percentage of the property, if it's used in a religious context. It seems to be example from certain zoning requirements.
I think that was thrust of it.
Yeah. Says when applications come in for properties primarily used for religious purposes, local planning and zoning boards need to be aware that such properties can only be subject to objective indefinite regulations concerning height of structures, yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, building coverage requirements, as long as said requirements are applicable regardless of the religious or nonreligious nature of the use of the property.
Do we currently have any of that? Is there a definition of that?
I think we need to have a, we need to add a definition, it sounds like, to our zoning for primarily religious use, right?
Do building codes apply in that situation? For, let's say occupancy, for example? Occupancy limits?
That's a good question.
Well, there would be site plan review requirements, that's what I'm saying, saying here.
I think someone should take a look at this section and try to digest it for us. There's a lot in here and it may or may not apply, right?
Yeah.
Well, and it has, it kind of walks you through how to do that, like those, where it says where to begin and all those, the questions to look at, so.
Yeah, but this is, this is a check.
I thought this was a medium.
Yeah.
But it may not apply.
Then it would be good to know he's not.
How does a public worship, do we have any?
We don't have any, right? Or that we know of.
But this is if one, I think this is about, if I want to put one in, if someone wants to put one in town, how do you treat them? I think that's what this is about.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah, we need to know.
But you should understand, what does it say?
To me, it's a little bit like the home business thing, but you can get around a lot of stuff.
Yes.
So you call it religious.
Right. If you want.
If you call it religious. So if you want to start, let's say, you know, two days a week, you're going to do something religious and one and a half days a week, you're going to live there and the other times it's vacant. You wouldn't have to worry about any of these site review things.
Right.
Except for the height and whatever else they make. Lighting signs, noise, drainage, streets, all that stuff. We don't, we have no authority on it if it's religious.
Ed, you want to research it a little bit more for the next meeting?
Sure. Put those both together at least.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Cool. Good. There's some action items there. Because certainly there will need to be some adjustments to the zoning for these. So we'll have to add it to our, more articles and follow that for March. Any other new business items we want to, on the agenda we want to sort out before we move on to whole business? Oh, all right, whole business. Review proposal ordinance changes. Review definition changes. And I sent along the updated wording for our three now zoning ordinances. So one is the 250 feet on proof private roads. Second one was our Cedar Park subdivision. We amended the wording at the end about the side rear lot lines, a butter right-of-way. And I added for this meeting repeal Article 2, comma 2, in Appendix E, which removes all the references to non-permitted uses.
So I think the second war article there still doesn't do what we want to do.
Okay.
Because if you're a corner lot, on a paraphrase, now it's not referring to. If it's a corner lot, it reverts back to the, to the conditions that everything has to be 40 feet long. And we don't. And the issue that you're trying to address is the frontage issues.
Right.
But by reverting back to the paragraph that you referenced there, everything's got to be 40 feet.
It says if side and rear lot lines abut a right-of-way or pond, lake, stream, brook, water course, marsh, or seasonally wet area and will follow setback standards defined in 3D for said lot lines. So we said side and rear.
Yeah, keep going.
That's it.
It references, you go, you have, I'll take my phone. There are different. If the side or rear lot lines abut a right-of-way, then the lot is treated as defined in 3D. The lot is treated as defined in 3D.
But we wrote said lines instead of the lot, right? That's what I have there.
If the side were real lots, but a right-of-way, lake, stream, river. And will follow setback standards defined in 3D for said lot lines. For said lot lines.
Yeah.
For said lot lines. Not all lot lines.
Yes, just for side and rear.
Why don't we say that?
This addresses a corner lot.
That's what we're trying to do.
Right. Or even one that's an island.
That's right.
You know, or, you know.
But on the corner lot, the road, the lines that face the road.
Yeah.
40 feet. The other lot lines are 15 feet.
Right.
Unless they're constrained by water or whatever.
Right, right. Or the, or the lots that are on, that could stream out.
That's what, that's what we're trying to say.
Yeah. Good. I'll find that. So we talked last meeting about some of the definitions for sheds, seasonal wetland, and ABU. I don't know if anybody put any time into looking into those definitions.
Sorry, before you.
Yeah, go for it.
Should we make it clear that the main, you know, not rear and side, it has to be 40 feet? Is that clear or does it say somewhere else?
It would be in 3D.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and RA1, comma 3D has our definition, the 40-foot, 70-foot, or whatever the setback is for the front lot.
So I'll make a proposal on sheds, see if we can prove it all.
Okay.
On page four, paragraph 3D. No structure or party interruption within 40 feet, side or rear lot line or within 50 feet of a right-of-way. You see, we're getting in trouble because we defined a structure as something that's permanently attached to the ground, which means you can put your chicken coop on a lot. Right? So that's, and that's what the building inspector's been wrestling with. Things are being put on the lot line that are not attached to the ground and our zoning permits it. So I added a sentence, hopefully it's a sentence. Sheds greater than 25 feet square feet must be at least 20 feet from the lot line.
So that's a.
And in paragraph D.
3D.
3D.
Yep.
And I just made those numbers up for discussion. I figure a chicken coop is, if you live in the part of town that has the small lots, you want a chicken coop on your lot line. I mean, if you've got 20 acres, it's not going to be on your lot line. It's going to be at the back of it or wherever. So I'm coming at it from the perspective of some of our smaller lots.
So let's hear, let's hear, lay it on me again so I can write it down.
Sheds, sheds are defined either, I looked at definition of shed. These are, we'll have to make sure we hit it.
Yeah.
It's effectively anything that scores anything of value, but we'll make sure we get it defined. Sheds greater than 25 square feet in area must be at least 20 feet from a lot. 25 is what? Five by five.
Sheds greater than 25 square feet in area must be at least 20 feet from lot line.
Because a chicken coop qualifies as an underground structure to use hardware wire to prevent predators from being in on the chicken coop. You can put it because it's buried in the ground, even though the structure is just sitting on the ground.
Even though the, the structure is just sitting on the ground, it's not, there's no cross post or anything like that.
I'm, I'm sorry, Gus, I, I couldn't hear you. I'm, I gotta hear you.
Oh. Sometimes, in chicken coops, sometimes people will use hardware wire in the perimeter to prevent predators from digging in. Does that still qualify as a shed, or is that considered attached to the ground?
It, it's the structure, the shed is something that actually holds, holds something of value. The shed has to be, the shed, not the, not the wires.
So what about a greenhouse? Would a greenhouse be considered a shed?
We have to look at the definition of shed now.
I didn't want you to do that, uh, one of my neighbors told me I had to build a building on that, and it was a house. What's a greenhouse then?
A greenhouse, the temporary greenhouses?
No, uh, you know.
With the, with the... Can you move it?
You could move it, you could take it apart and put it back together again.
So you wouldn't need a permanent...
So it's not permanent?
Yeah, you don't need a permanent, no.
So, uh, we don't have sheds as a definition of the zoning.
It was a whole piece.
We have structures.
You're going to say, structure is...
Anything permanently affixed to the ground, including, but it's not limited to dwellings, accessory buildings such as garages, barns, sheds, necessary items such as windmills and ground pools, freestanding satellite and regular antenna, and freestanding solar panels.
I'll get a definition of sheds. Okay.
So I'm trying to remember why we had seasonal wetland as a...
Because Nick, Nick communicated through me that it was just a problem for him. Because we require 75 feet from it, and we run pools and seasonal wetlands, and I thought the discussion was, leave it alone.
Well, the idea is that you would stay away from it, right? Current zoning, 75 feet?
Yes. But at this point, it's only seasonally wet for maybe three or four weeks of the year, and that becomes quite a burden.
Yeah. Wait a hundred years and it'll be, it'll be filled in. Sorry, didn't even joke about that.
Just for all you said.
Is there anything that the board wants to do about seasonal wetland as a discussion point? Do we want to investigate that some more? Can we set a definition? I don't think we have a reference to seasonal wetland in, other than maybe I just read it a few minutes ago. Seasonally wet area.
Does the state have any limitations on that?
I'm sure they lost.
Yep. I mean, yeah, is it two weeks, is it four weeks, is it two months? How long?
You want to look up seasonal wet area for the next meeting?
Thank you.
What if it's artificially created? So if somebody runs a culvert into a low area, it's a seasonal wetland. Can you move the culvert? And then if it's no longer seasonal, can you build it?
I, that's a question that I don't have any...
That's a good, yeah. That's what happened to us. We have a culvert that runs into a low area, it's wet.
Yeah.
Two weeks a year.
Yeah.
We got rejected for a garage.
Yeah.
They haven't could have moved the culvert, you know, we didn't bother to, yeah, garage somewhere else, but, yeah.
We have a lot of those in town where people have brain engine to just try to control it.
Yeah.
And then it moves back to bite them.
Yep.
Yeah, 80 years is the last one, which we have a definition for, which is a residential living unit incidental and subordinate to the single-family dwelling with which it is associated, that provides independent living facilities for one or more persons, including provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel of land as the primary dwelling unit it accompanies.
And our zoning is such that you can build a two-family house, effectively you can build a two-family house with this zoning.
Yep.
If that's what we want, we leave it alone. If we want to say an ADU is really an ADU.
Yep.
Then I would, I'd word it here. And the floor, and the, I want to need help. And the square footage of the ADU can be no, or no greater than 25% of the original building. If we want to do that. We're getting ADUs that are really two-family houses. This is true. So I, my note was in, was on page three, paragraph D. What if the ADUs...
By adding the ADU, you can exceed the sector system, uh, limitations for that property. Is that something that we would need to address?
Well, how do they get a built-in one?
Because they, because you have, because you have an interior door.
Yep, that's number four, is that shows the interior door.
Well, you put a decepticon.
Yeah.
As long, as long as you have an interior, interior door, that's our constraint.
And separate ownership is prohibited.
Yes, yes, but, no.
So I think the definition of ADU is fine, it's just, or unless, uh, what is, you have to, you're looking to amend the condition.
Yeah, how, how big do we want it?
Eight, nine.
And then it was real minimal, too. Instead of the ADU shall be contained within, within or attached to a single-family dwelling.
Yep.
And then I said, have been no greater than 25% of the original dwelling's living space. If it's, if it's an ADU.
It's attached.
Oh, it's attached, but it can't be too big, that says.
Right.
25% of the... If we want two-family houses, we should, we should say we want two-family houses.
So the question is, do we amend to, to add a square footage?
That's right. Other towns require you to share a bathroom or share a kitchen.
Yep.
It's definitely family that, if I'm going to be sharing facilities.
Yep. Yep, I seem to remember we did some discussion about this a couple of years ago, where we were talking about, yeah, the square footage for this.
And other towns don't require them to be attached at all, or connecting door, rent, and...
That's right.
But they're all apartments, I think.
Terry, do you mind researching the ADU square footage for us for the next meeting?
For other, you mean other towns?
Uh, I believe there is actually some, um, uh, the OSI has some documentation on ADUs.
Yeah, I remember reading it, was it last year?
Yeah, it was a year or two, a few years ago, that we looked in it. Do you mind bringing to the next meeting, uh, some square footage guidance from that?
I, I picked a number, so maybe that's a plausible number, right?
Well, no, I, I think that's where we should look at, what the state has, and they may have some guidance on to that. And it probably wouldn't hurt to look at it and maybe resolve any.
You're right. I might even still have links for those few towns that I looked at before.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you. Alright, so the last one we had on this, uh, zoning ordinance changes was lot access in regards to 250 feet of frontage, which is our RA1 3C. So our debate was, uh, driveways should be on the 250 feet, right?
That was, that was the discussion, do we, do we want that?
Yeah. Is that something we want to amend RA1 3C for? Say, we want to make a motion, maybe we should make a motion on this one.
Yeah, that'd be fine, because, because if someone doesn't have the 250, remember, they can almost go to the ZBA and say, hey, look, it just killed, it doesn't work.
Yep.
And if the people in town say, you're right, that they can grant the variance.
Right.
So if you make a motion, I'll support it.
So I'll make a motion, uh, that, uh, driveways have to be on the 250 feet of contiguous frontage.
That supports the law, yep. That's like a...
Let's have a discussion.
Now, what's the second way of the discussion?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that was the original intent behind having that, but it just wasn't specified.
Had an earlier plan. In a meeting years ago, I brought up that our zoning does not even require a driveway. You don't need a driveway in this town, it's not part of our zoning. So this says, if you put one in, it's got to be on the 250 feet of frontage that the lot has on the main ra, on the main road. Most people put it in, but they didn't want any regs saying it's got to be this or that way.
So if we kind of think back to our frontage discussions we've had over the past couple of years, it's meant to prevent uh, acquiring 250 feet through different, has to be contiguous, so has to, oh, it has to touch rather than have 50 feet on one lot line, a east lot line, 200 on the west lot line, which both are on roads, classified roads, so that would qualify as a local lot. So the idea was to get 250 feet put together, so that way, I think it, personally, it seems, that's the, the direction of the, that intent is to make sure that the driveway access is on that 250 feet. So. I mean, you look at our discussion we had, I mean, our, our subdivision application we had earlier this year, that would change how that was executed, certainly.
They probably could have proved hardship, though, I think.
But that would have been, they would have to go to the ZBA for that, so...
Because they had, what, 800 feet on?
Yeah, a couple thousand, yeah.
But, so, so what was it, 150 feet or something, 30 feet they ended up doing?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah. So I mean, really, this would be a bit of a reaction to that application, because that certainly caused some concern. What are people's thoughts? Any other discussion on, on this, or do we want to vote whether or not we want to include this?
I don't have anything else, I don't know if that was the intent originally.
Okay. Are we saying a driveway? Has that 250 on that, where they go in, or they say, if there's access, let's say, over a lawn that has 250 feet, can the driveway on the other side be on a 50-foot piece? X was access, we, is it a driveway?
Lot access.
So the way it's written right now, they just have to have 250 feet of frontage.
Correct.
To be a building lot.
Correct.
With no requirement of access on that 250.
Correct. So maybe this gets defined as driveway, then? Oh. Yeah, so driveway, a private way that serves not more than two lots and provides vehicle or access to any street or approved private road.
I mean, is that a big deal to make sure the access is on the 250? Does it matter?
Wasn't that the issue with this?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So...
But the access was on a lot line that was wireless and 250.
Right.
Because it was written as two separate lots, so it was only, what, 75 and 75, something roughly?
That wouldn't have been allowed. If this was a place, that wouldn't have been allowed.
Right, then this, it wouldn't be last, right, yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
The other option is to put it in the subdivision rates. Which I think we heard, we can amend anytime when we want.
Yes, yeah. Yep. Yes. Well, we're talking about the zoning for right now. So do we want to amend from lot, lot access to driveway? So the drive, uh, motion is to have a driveway located on the 250 feet of contiguous frontage. What are people's thoughts on going from lot access to driveway? We don't have a definition for lot access, so...
That's pretty wide open, like you said, could be four-wheeling a good lot.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I think the only condition I would think of is say you had a lot that had 300 feet of frontage, but was 100 acres. So if you probably have to put a driveway on that, you can only have two lots.
Without a road.
Right.
Could the ZBA override that with hardship? Could the ZBA change that with a hardship?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, could it just be part of the driveway permitting? You go for a driveway permit, that's where you stipulate that it's on the 250, or more frontage line.
But I don't think that would stop a subdivision, what happened over here.
So...
But do we want to stop a subdivision?
I mean, we, well, the town said we want lots to have 250 feet, and we just created two lots that have 75 feet. That's, it doesn't seem to be consistent with...
No, it doesn't.
So this then gets us into road approved, private, road, private. You know, a road private is, uh, serves three or more lots. So if you were to make, in that condition, we would have to call this lot access, uh, to have a, a driveway or road, a private road located on the 250 feet.
Why don't we put it in our subdivision rates? Because there's, if a person has a lot today, if a person has the lot today, it seems like we're applying it after the fact to a person that might have a lot.
Doesn't conform.
Right.
One that wouldn't conform to at this point.
Yeah, but if a subdivision comes down the road, and they want to put a driveway on a small lot, we can say no to the subdivision. It's a tough one.
Yes.
But technically, that one across the street did have 250-foot of frontage for all three of those lots, didn't it?
Yes.
So...
This would have required, this is a drug way to come in.
So, I mean, that, so we can still require that, it's just whether they put the driveway on that lot. Do we want to keep them from subdividing a big parcel if they have plenty of frontage according to their subdivision? That was my point. My point was, they were taking frontage that's new and making it more minimal.
Oh, by cutting it in half, well, yeah, well, you know how I felt about that, so...
Let's vote on it, then. We've had a discussion, let's see where people lie on this. I mean, we'll leave it unchanged, lot access, we could amend it as we go through, continue on the hierarchical pass process. So all those in favor of having lot access located on 250-foot foot of contiguous frontage, amending RA1 3C, please say aye.
Aye.
The three of us? Yes, opposed?
No.
No.
Staying?
I say, yes.
Okay. Three, two...
First time staying was, it might be easier to do with the subdivision rates. To try to argue this in front of the town at a public hearing.
Yep.
But what if it only applies to a single building lot that a guy's trying to build on? He's got a 20-acre parcel, and he's got 400-foot of frontage on this line, but he wants his driveway to go...
his driveway to go on this road instead, the main road instead, and he's only got 150 feet of frontage there. It's only a single building lot, so we're going to turn it down. This would say? This is, what, where did we put this? The zoning?
Yeah, the zoning on 3C.
Should have made that topic before we voted.
I don't know, because I just think I'm a little excited.
Well, we're amassing all of our one articles now, they're going to have to go through a review again.
But see, the point that Terry made is the point that I was making, that's an old lot. So we're burdened, someone that had a lot in the past with the new reg, as opposed to somebody's coming in with 20 acres or 30 acres trying to subdivide, and get around, get around the intent of our zoning. That, that's where my, my was coming from.
Moving on. Home-based businesses.
So I went to Albany, and I picked, I extracted what Albany has, and I think you shared it with everybody.
Yes.
And the thrust of it is, it clearly defines two operations for a home, home occupation and a home business. And the thrust of it is if the occupation is such that you live in the house and there's no visible anything on the outside, the town doesn't want to know about it. If there's some activity that requires some interaction with the public, or a business or a selling, then effectively, what I think this says is you got to get a permit. And they say you got to go to the ZBA for a permit, but I, 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 you know, I don't, whether it's the planning board for a permit, or the selectmen for a permit, just have someone discuss what you're going to do, so that we can yea or nay, or put some constraints on it. And at that point, we take out our list of what's permitted and non-permitting, because everything that has an impact on the outside of your dwelling has to be reviewed by the planning board or the selectmen.
I vote for the selectmen.
Somebody, somebody.
Yes, I, I like this Albany zoning ordinance, it's very simple, it doesn't penalize people who are, you know, having, you know, just a, you know, a hobby business at home, or, or if they work from home, like we discussed last month, whether, what if you're, you know, running a small business of, you know, internet consulting or something of like that nature.
Well, the intent, but the intent is to protect the. The neighbors. The neighbors from something that wasn't detailed in our zoning.
Right.
So, what I hand it out, say you see the ZBA.
Yeah.
So you'd have to, we'd have to change those wording, that you have to get a permit from the selectmen.
Yeah.
And that's what you, what we were hoping to do anyway. So we would take out, effectively, paragraph B on page two, residential permitted uses.
I think, uh.
Page two, number D.
Yep, I think two, we were advised two through.
Keep going.
Uh.
Don't beat. Go ahead, I don't know.
I, I think that the two through eight in our current zoning would stay in that B section, because they're not very different from what is listed as home occupation here.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
Uh, on B, uh, two through eight.
Yeah.
Those essentially are what they have aligned here in Albany.
Okay, so leave those alone.
So do we make a separate section for home business?
I think that's what, I think that's what they did, right? If you live, if you work home, and just you visit someone, so. And that should make people that work home feel better, because we don't want to tell about it. So does the owner of the property have to actually live on the property? What if he's leasing a home, which is somebody who's living there running a business? I think it says Albany's in a dress sign in here, isn't it?
Says, "A home business shall be carried on by residents of the premises."
Which means it can be leased.
Right.
Or rented. So the owner doesn't necessarily have to live there.
That's right.
I don't know if that would make a difference anyway, I guess, would it?
That's what that means by carried on? Shall be carried on?
Yes, it should be carried on by residents of the premises.
E1 said the owner resides on. I'm sorry, we used to say the owner, is that what you're saying?
That's what it says now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we can change it.
Well, why don't we do this, Mom and I draft in this information from Albany with what we currently have put together, end up on page two or three of our list of articles for 2022, and we'll, we'll review it at the next meeting, if that's not fair to everybody. We can have a more poignant discussion with everything consolidated.
And then, so the people that have those businesses now, there is no, like, they don't have a permit now, right? So, is, do they then need to come forth and apply, or how is that going to work? How does that work?
You made mention of Sandoz before, you said there were four or five Sandoz in town?
Yeah, we've got, we've got half a dozen Sandoz in town.
I would think that they would have a ton.
That's why, right? Another grandfather goes and said.
That's what I was wondering.
Everything forward.
Everything going forward in new business.
Next item is discuss subdivision regulations and potential changes.
So we decide not to do the 250-foot line being used for access for the property?
Well, we could do it there too. There's nothing stopping us from putting it there also.
Might be easier, like you said, I mean, if that's what our intent is.
However, I don't know where in our subdivision regulations it has the, I don't think it has a distance.
I think the subdivision regs talk about driveway, keep lot head of driveway, I think.
Yeah, it's the driveway is the one we were talking about, but there's no distance.
Can you put in the ordinance, if subdividing, the driveway must go on the 250?
You, you put in the subdivision regs, so if they're coming in the subdivision, that's for the reg.
Okay.
250 feet, you draw a line on the 250.
So we had, uh. So we were amending road private, shall be a highway, street, road, avenue, or a way not open to public use.
That's what we were going to do for.
Yep.
The other issue.
So if we say that driveway, a private way that serves not more than two lots and provides vehicle or access to any street or private road that lies on the 250 feet of class road
We have the words already.
I, I didn't print it out, I have to look at the subdivision regs. Because I think we say the law's intent, 250 feet on a road.
Well, it's not in the subdivision regulation. It's only in the zoning.
Is it?
No. It's not. Subdivision regulations.
Yeah, all it says is a private way that serves no more than two lots and provides vehicle or, vehicle or access to any street or private road.
What were you reading? Saying, it's from 2008, February 11th, 2008, it's the last time the subdivision regulations were updated.
And then goes into private road, shall be a highway, street, road, avenue, or a way not open to public use, as a matter of right for a vehicular travel, maintenance and repair which shall be borne by the subdivider, letting landlords or an association of letting landlords. Just look at it, I'll look at it too. I'll print it out.
Okay, all right, so we'll take this up at the next meeting then.
Well, that'd be the place to put it in, it would be right there on page two, I guess, wouldn't you think? Look at it.
Yep.
Some of these, there, I say, we must say 250 feet of frontage.
There isn't.
There isn't?
No.
Our subdivision rates don't say it has to be 250.
I don't see it in there, no.
That's why I want to look.
Yeah.
Do the old search. Oh, yeah.
All right, we'll come back to that. Grab a lit inspections.
Uh, both letters were received, um, so I'm going to try to go out next month and get both those done. Do you want to go with me?
Yeah.
Give me a drink, and I'll meet you at your place in the lower.
So you'll reach out to land, landowners, schedule a time?
Yes, I will.
So the next meeting is October 10th, so.
You want me to try to do it before then?
That'd be good. All right, that was quick, thank you. Member comments? It's getting hot in here, geez.
It's all their brain power.
Yeah. No member comments, uh, adjourned, the next meeting is October 10th, 2022.
8:04.